What we'd want to know is if we let them know the answer on that date. If we can, can we completely get it ordered and invoiced? Within that next week, so it's in our last go for cycle, go for four.
Yeah, because it's gonna take about eight to 10 weeks to get it.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. But we want to make sure if we can order it, will he invoice us? Or it doesn't have to wait till it comes in? I think that's kind of crucial.
Yeah, good point.
All right, hold, hold that thought, Trish.
Okay.
We'll come right back to it. I don't have. Diane, if you have the public hearing stuff, if you could share it on the screen. I'm gonna start with. It, I have the time as 7:01. As Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Newton, New Hampshire, I find that due to the state of emergency. Declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12. Pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, the public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe. Or listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom conferencing. Software for this electronic meetings, all members of the board have the ability to communicate during the meeting through the platform. Public has contemporaneously access to listen and if necessary, participate. And the numbers are. Meeting ID number is 904-045-7732, where there's a link that was provided. If any, if anyone has a problem, please email BOSSsecretary@newtonnh.net. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting due to the. Software, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Okay, so this is a public hearing. And the Board of Selectmen, I'll read the notice. Dated September 15th, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 15th. 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM, utilizing Zoom conferencing software for the following. To take input on the DOT's proposed options to improve. The intersection of State Route 108, Amesbury Road, Maple Ave. Please see the town's website for links to the video where the DOT reviewed the two options at their public meeting. Those held on August 13th, 2020. The Board of Selectmen will make a recommendation to the DOT. Upon conclusion of the public hearing. Additionally, the conference call number and Zoom link were posted, we posted this to the newspaper, to the town website. Probably to the library too, right? So we. We end on the bulletin board for anyone who has been in town hall. So the purpose of this public hearing really is to get residential feedback. On the proposals, if you haven't seen the DOT. Proposal from August 13th, it is available on our YouTube channel, if you want to go back and look at that. They're very clear at the end, they're looking for a recommendation from the town. But there's kind of like a capital R in recommendation. This is. Basically, DOT is going to make the decision. And they appreciate our input. But. We're not making a decision tonight, so I caution that if there's any vote taken tonight. By this board, it will be voting to. Make a recommendation, it's not voting to. Approve the project. We could vote tonight to make a recommendation for a rotary and they might just do a four-way stop. Or they might not do it at all. So, just so that's clear. We do. I think if we end up doing any, if anybody's gonna provide any comments, which we hope you will tonight. In the meeting, we need to know who you are and all that good stuff for the minutes. But other than that, anything I'm missing for the public hearing part of all of this?
No.
I'm good, okay. So, I'll open it up, whether it's. Town officials or residents, I'll open it up right now if you want to. Let me know who you are and I'll give you the floor if you want to discuss this subject, any aspect of it at all. Diane Moran, is it?
Yeah, yes, thank you very much. I listened to those proposals and what caught my interest was the four-way stop sign. Because what he said in there, he says we, they could possibly in the future. If needed, put in stoplights. So they would prepare the ground for stoplights, just in case, they would run the conduit and stuff like that. To me, that would make the most sense. We could start with a four-way stop, if that doesn't work, we need to go to a stoplight, the infrastructure would be there.
So you're saying you could kind of start and build up, whereas if you do the rotary, there's no stoplights going in there. Yeah.
That's, as a resident, that was my, that's what I picked up on it.
That's good, I hadn't picked up on that, but that makes sense. All right, anybody else?
Matt Kelly. I don't want to see a rotary. I would like to see the four-way with the stop light. Only because of the fact that. It is cheaper. And they said that the rotary was looking at 1.2 or 1.3 million dollars and a little over $800,000 for this. And my reason behind it is because once. Once they do our project and it's over with, we'd have to go back on the 10-year plan again to get any improvements. Other than that, I'd go for the four-way stop.
Okay. Looks like Kate Michaels.
I guess I'm a. Have a differing, differing thoughts. I know when I moved to Newton many years ago, we pride ourselves on not having a stoplight, my, from, we're talking to people, most people don't really. I mean, I want a traffic light at one point, that's just what I've heard. The DOT is paying for it, we're not, which is great. I'm actually based on these particular considerations, it, the circle. Is quieter for abutters and neighbors on the neighborhood, it is definitely more pedestrian friendly. As they said, it is safer, which is also better for the abutters in the neighborhood. And it produces much less local air pollution, so every time you stop and start your car, you're producing more exhaust, more. More pollution. It is, if you've seen the one in Newburyport, it is beautiful to look at. I mean, maybe, I don't know if you've driven on, it's very easy, even the four-ways can be confusing. It's small, compact, it could be very pretty, it's high-end, really, we're, again, we're not paying for it, I'd say we get the better thing. I think it would add to the town, add to property values, it kind of worked with the times, that. But more importantly, to me, it's just all win-win. If it's quieter, better for pollution, safer, more pedestrian friendly. And we're not paying for it, that's my opinion. That's how I see it. Those are.
All right.
So Matt, I'm, I'm in favor with the four-way stop, not sure about the traffic light though. You know, I just think if all four side stop, because right now. Two side stop and the other two slow down. So. But, you know, whatever the majority of the board wants, that's fine with me, but I prefer the four-way stop.
What, um, how about any residents out there on the Zoom tonight that want to speak to this? Looks like our town moderator, you, you can count as a resident for this.
Yeah, I'm a resident too, I'm speaking solely as a resident and I live on, you know, off of Bear Hill, so. We, on our side of town, we come up to that intersection to get on 108. Or if you're coming from Exeter and you're coming down 108, you're in essence, you know, crossing the traffic. Flow and a, and you're not really making a left-hand turn, but you sort of are, if you think about it, right? Because the road's curving around to the right, and so you gotta stop in the traffic flow and then, you know, wend your way over to the left. It's, it's a tough intersection, I mean, it's, it's a crazy intersection now. Because also when you're getting ready to pull out of that intersection, you don't know which way people are going. Right? Because people sometimes don't think that. They're going straight, right? So they're coming north on 108. And they're not going to stay on 108, they're going to get, is it Maple Ave, is that the road that comes in from the right there? I forget the name of it. But they're going off on Maple Ave, but at first, from their point of view, they're not turning, so they don't even bother with the indicator, they just, you know, sail across. So. I can see that even with, I mean, it definitely needs fixing one way or another. And the only problem with the four-way stop is unless the. Corner is reconfigured to look like a true four-way intersection, it's still going to be confusing. Because the majority of, you know, a lot of the people are using that intersection. Are, in essence, they're not going straight, they're making a left turn, right? There was, there's, the most common traffic flow is a left-hand turn. And if you think about a normal four-way stop, the most common traffic flows go straight. Right? In either direction, and then, you know, people make a right and sometimes people make a left. But we're probably looking at a situation where 90% of the people are making a left-hand turn in a, in a four-way stop. So I'm not a traffic engineer, but that sure seems like a strange case, right? That, 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 that is not necessarily well-suited to a four-way stop, I mean, think about if it was a red light. Right? The, the red light would need 90% of the time would be a left arrow. Because the people on 108, of course, are either making a left or a right. Northbound, they're making a left, so that kind of, to me, suggests that, that. The rotary needs exploration, or at least the state guys should do a lot of thinking about a rotary. Because rotaries are good in multi-way crazy intersections, and I'm going to second Kate's idea. If she's referring to the, the rotary that's just over the chain bridge into Newburyport. That's a nutty intersection, and I've driven through that many, many times, because our kids used to go to school in Newburyport. And it's got like five roads coming into it, I think, and, you know, from various directions. And it works with that little rotary. And similarly, the same thing is true in Amesbury, there's a little rotary right at the end of. I use Lion's Mouth Road, I think, when you, when you're heading into Amesbury there, near the firehouse. And that seems to work, right? And there's, it, it, it's counterintuitive, but it kind of works, people figure it out and they go around. So I, I would say, just from my own thoughts, that. Unless somebody's done a ton of thinking about that. Four-way stop, I would be inclined to say, build a rotary.
I think it's the comedian Stephen Wright who said rotaries are, are God's way of saying, you work it out?
No, 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 it's, I have to interject because it's a roundabout.
Roundabout, okay.
A rotary is very different, a rotary is, tries to keep cars moving at a faster speed, a roundabout. Has been, studies have been used in Europe all the time, it's a single lane. In one direction, and it actually kind of, you don't stop, but you slow down, it's, so. I want people in their heads to not picture those crazy rotaries. Excuse me, I'm getting almost, rotaries and, you know, that thing in Portsmouth, this is a roundabout. They're really easy, I remember when I first went to the one in Newburyport and I was like, oh my, because you know, if you've ever been to big ones, and it was, it's easy. And there, again. It's safer, it's statistically, we can, I mean, I should have brought the literature, but it is safer for everyone there, which is, to me, really important.
Tell, tell my mother that, she lives in Newburyport, she doesn't like to go that way, actually, she finds it. I tell her it's safer, but. The, the one in Merrimack Center, is that a roundabout or a rotary? What would you call that?
I don't know, that's just bizarre, because there's like cobblestones and.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, that's bizarre.
Yeah, that's not a typical thing.
I find my, you know, I grew up in this area and I've been going in that direction all my life. And all of a sudden, I find myself parking.
Right.
I'm pulling into a parking space in downtown Merrimack, I'm like, what happened? I was just trying to get around.
Right, I was trying to look at like, what is safer? For not only people to be there, around, you know, now it's in their backyard, but. I made my point, it seems.
Yes, Diane.
I put up on the screen what the DOT will do with the four-way intersection, so Bob can see that they are reconfiguring it. And Barbara White has her hand up.
Yes, hi, actually, it's Jim, wants to say something.
I'd like to add, Barbara and I have driven around in Europe quite a bit. We found out that even the drivers there aren't always consistent about doing the same things. I'd rather have, we would rather have. A, a stop where everybody stops. There's no maybes, no ifs, you stop. And then, when it's your turn, you go. I think, having driven all over the United States as well, that's the most dependable and safest.
If you turn around and go to Route 4 and 125. You're chasing yourself to get through there. And the same thing up there in Portsmouth, it's hard to get through them rotaries. The four-way stop, to me, is the better way. I understand what. Katie's saying about the emissions and stuff like that, but. Chances are, the cars are going to be slowing down earlier because there's going to be a sign. And each one of them saying, there's a traffic light ahead.
Okay, just again, remember, this is a roundabout. Not a rotary, so it's not like.
They're pretty much the same.
Not really, because again, the roundabouts slow you and the rotaries are much faster, they're designed to increase speed, make people go faster. And studies show that roundabouts reduce injury crashes by 75% at intersections where stop signs or signals were previously used for. Traffic controlled, traffic control, according to study by the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety.
Sorry, I was talking to mute, anybody else, any residents who wanted to be heard tonight? No? So I'm wondering, this goes out to the Board of Selectmen. What does the board want to do? Do we want to? Put this to a vote tonight as a recommendation, so in other words, we vote to draft a letter? To DOT, or what's, what's the board thinking they want to do?
I want to get the ball rolling, so I'd make a decision tonight.
Well, I think the ball's gonna roll without us, so.
What is Lisa, does Lisa have any opinion that she wanted to bring forth?
I don't know, she.
She couldn't be here?
She couldn't be here, she had a work obligation.
Do any conservation people have an opinion to add, hint, hint? Trish? Nope, okay.
All right, so.
Sorry, I was unmuting myself. So Conservation looked at it, we made comments on the call with the state. We feel a little bit better, we've done a little bit more research. The wetlands impact, that's on the corner of Maple and Amesbury Road, we were concerned about that. We've had. Opinions both on the four-way intersection and the rotary. We actually spoke to the road agent and the police chief to get input. So I'm going to defer to, you know, those that specialize in this kind of stuff, as far as conservation is concerned. We're happy with what we were told about the wetland impact. And the culvert that was talked about at the state, on the state call, that is in rough shape, we actually didn't realize it was as bad as it was, so it's interesting that. That will be part of the repair, so we're kind of happy with that.
Thank you, great input.
Thanks, Kate.
Thanks. All right, anybody from the board want to make any sort of a motion?
Hey, Matt, I'm not part of the board, but can you hear me?
Mike, we can hear you.
Thank you. Hey, Kate said something a little while ago, and I want to confirm that the accuracy on that. The state is paying 100% of this vote, the town doesn't have to put in any money to this.
Nope.
Can I, just so you know, that the town would have to maintain it, the rotary, or the roundabout?
I saw the state.
The town, that's what they specified.
It's on the state road, though.
That, no, they said that, Diane's right.
They're talking about the, the berm or whatever, right? Is that what you're talking about? So, we would have to do one of those, adopt a, you know. Adopt a berm or somebody can guard. Mike will take care of it, Mike Povera will be out there, he'll be all right.
Yeah, no, that's, honestly, that's why I'm asking this question, because. Sadly, and, and safety is number one, I don't want to, you know. Make safety not important in this conversation, because it is, and it's why the rotary is being talked about. But closely, right behind it is cost. And. If, if there's a maintenance, and, and, and I'm shocked that the state is saying that we need to maintain it, because. Three quarters of that is on a state road. I mean, right now, there's nothing for us to maintain. Three of those, three of those roads leading into that intersection are state roads, the only road that's a town road is Maple Ave. So just maintenance costs, we're not getting a good deal, at all.
And granted, you know, we are paying for this, it's just coming out of a different bucket, so our.
Well, and that's true, Matt, yeah, I mean, that, I mean, that's true, it's just, yeah, yeah, it's labeled differently, but. I'm looking at more at what the long-term, and if it's a maintenance thing for the town of Newton, yeah, was, I don't want any part of it.
Yeah.
And that was said on that last state call we had. Somebody specifically asked that question, maintaining it and, you know, damage of plows maybe, or curbing or anything, and they said. Once it's done, that it was the town's responsibility.
Yeah, and if that's true, Trish, honestly, my vote would be, I want no part of it. I don't have enough money to maintain the roads we got now, I don't need something else added to it.
Right, and that's, that's why, and I think it was mentioned in that, that other meeting, is, that's why most of these towns, you see that sign? There that says adopted by, you know. Whatever, the Boy Scouts or whomever, like it's.
Because they were forced into it.
Well, the town was kind of, the town is trying to get another source of revenue, basically, you know.
Right. So, excuse me, I just want to make sure, so are their projects, and we're totally sure, whether it's the stop or the roundabout. Will require, are, we now have to pay maintenance for it?
Yes.
That's the price we pay the piper for them paying a million dollars, which is.
Yep.
Well, I don't.
Or whatever.
What would the maintenance be for a four-way stop? The maintenance for a four-way stop would be totally different. Than, or completely a different number than a, a roundabout.
No, we need to, we don't know what those numbers are yet, we shouldn't find out.
Right, but if, and, and Mike Povera, you can jump in here, if, if they put four stop signs over there. The maintenance for us is. I mean, just four stop signs, right?
Well, I, again, yeah, logically, you would think it's the four stop signs, but who's going to maintain the line striping, the stop bars? The pavement wear and tear. You know, it's, I, I think it's a lot less than the rotary would, would be, but there's still. I mean, line striping, you got four, four stop bars you're going to have to do every year. You're going to have other, and it's just not going to be stop bars, it's, it's, you know. All, well, three of the roads, not four of them, are going to have some type of division line between the two travel lanes. So there's. There's more cost of that, and then Diane said a little while ago that the future is to put stoplights up there, does the town inherit the stoplights?
What I said was, there's a possibility, should it need to, doesn't mean that we have.
But, but if it goes, if it goes to stoplights, are the stoplights part of the maintenance for the town?
They didn't specify that, they only specified with the roundabout.
Again, to Kate's point, stoplights would be a sea change for the town of Newton, so we have no experience with that.
Right, and, and, you know, there is a, there is a, just the power cost to those right now, there's a flash in yellow. And red light that's up there, and, and that's maintained by the state, I believe.
Yeah, it is.
I don't think, we, I don't think we pay any of the power to that, I know they maintain the light and the, and the hanging structures for that. Nancy, do we pay a power bill for that?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
All right, so we have no cost on that, and I like that.
No cost.
That works, that works for me as a highway budget.
So I'll put it out there again, to the board members, does anybody want to make a motion at all?
We need to recommend something to the state, they said within a month.
I, I would correct that statement, we don't need to do anything.
Matt, we do have somebody that has their hand raised.
Okay, good, go ahead, whoever somebody is.
Oona had his hand raised or her hand.
Okay. They're on mute, can you take them off of mute, Diane?
No, he's not on mute.
Oh, there we go.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, this is Ron Scovron, I live at 21 Ghul Hill. And I have a couple of concerns. Whichever decision is made, either a four-way stop or a roundabout, and my concerns are. The southwest corner of this intersection, that it be reforestrated. To eliminate any lighting or whatever effects that may affect this intersection. Because I'm sure that it's going to be a lot of areas disturbed there. Also, I see that the telephone pole on Ghul Hill at the intersection of Amesbury Road. And Ghul Hill is in the parameters of the project, and I would. Recommend that it be moved and Ghul Hill made a narrower entrance. My other two concerns are. What will the lighting look like with a new intersection, either way, four-way or turnaround?
Good point.
Any roundabout? And the signage on Amesbury Road or any other street that would be required. With this project.
Good question.
I think those are good questions for the DOT. You know, it's something, obviously, at the end of this meeting, we could share the minutes with the DOT. We also have. We still have, at the end of that DOT meeting, they shared email addresses and stuff, we can, we can certainly give you those. I think it's Diane's about to roll right to that page.
Matt?
Charlie?
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right, hold on, just, I'll, I'll give it to you in a sec, Charlie. So for Mr. Scovron, I would say. Your questions are good ones, but I don't think there's anybody on the phone who can answer them.
Correct.
So Diane's get on the screen here, if you're on video. She's get the project manager's contact info. Wanted to call him or email him, and in the meantime, what we'll do is, at the end of this meeting. I'd like to, and hopefully the board's okay with this, we share the, the minutes of this meeting with DOT.
It's a public record, so they can get it, and Chief Jewett has his hand up.
Right, but I, I know it's a public record, but I, I, I think we send it directly to them.
Okay.
Just so they don't have to search for it, but Chief Jewett, go ahead.
Thank you, I just wanted to put, just kind of give you my, my opinion of it. You know, either way, I think whichever direction we choose to go in, I think it's going to help that intersection. My concern with the two of them, and I'll make it as quick as I can, four-way intersection, we have now four cars stopping. As you guys are probably all aware, cars don't like to stop at stop signs. They, you know, cars run stop signs, the problem is, when a car runs a stop sign, now, we have the. It's going to be a higher speed going into that intersection. With the car at a higher speed, the crashes are going to be higher, with the roundabout. In my opinion, the roundabout, the cars are going to be going into that. We take away the element of the four-way crash or two-way crash or whatever it is, we take that out. Because the speeds are going to be slower. For me, a safety, looking at it from my point of view, the roundabout would be a safer bet, only for the fact that. Cars enter the roundabouts at a slower speed. And, you know, and I know there's definitely people out there that do not know how to go around a roundabout or a rotary, I see it every day. But with that said, the speeds are slower, the crashes would be at slower speeds, four-way intersection, higher, higher chances of accidents. With someone blowing a stop sign, but either, either way. Uh, but either, either way will be a improvement, uh, for what we have there now.
Great. So important feedback there from the police chief, so. Before I turn it over to Charlie, who wants to make a motion, is there anybody else who wants to be heard?
Me again.
Kate, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I want to just completely double-check the maintenance, like 100% of the maintenance will be on us regardless, really want to know about that. Um, I was just trying to find out, I know that if we ever did go to a light, which, traffic light, that I finally found a piece by that same insurance company, they say that your hardware, hardware maintenance, electrical costs, traffic signals are 10,000 a year, which is less than the roundabout. And as, and just again, echoing what the chief said with a few things. At four-way intersections, there are 32 possible vehicle-to-vehicle conflicts, at a four-way roundabout, there are eight. Okay.
So, the only thing I want to add, I want to say it again for people who might not have joined right at the top of this, is, now Kate just asked a question. We're not gonna get an answer tonight on this question. Unfortunately, but again, we have project manager contact information to get.
Yeah.
That's maintenance, uh, issue on. Nancy said something, uh, earlier, which is actually not quite correct, but we don't have to do anything tonight. We're basically, we gave the public a chance to talk about this tonight. We can, if we have a motion and it passes, it's non-binding, meaning we're not picking tonight whether they're gonna do a roundabout or a four-way stop. We're basically gonna send a letter to DOT saying, we had this meeting, it was put to a vote, this is how the vote came out. In the end, their DOT is gonna do what they want. Whoever the decision-makers are, are gonna do what they want. They might do nothing. Because they might not get the funding, uh, for years to come, so this is really a non-binding public hearing, to give people a voice, and, and coming out of this will be the minutes and perhaps a letter, which will be public information, but so that's, that's what this is all about. So, uh, with that, Charlie, did you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, if we do a four-way intersection with the traffic light, with signs stating, "Traffic light ahead."
Second.
There was no traffic light option given by the DOT, that's not even a possibility. By the way.
So Larry seconded, so now we're into discussion, Kate started the discussion.
That wasn't given by the DOT.
Right, so Charlie, I would like to make a, I would, right, Charlie took the words out of my mouth, I think in your motion, the word "recommendation" has to be in your motion.
That's all we're doing, Matt, we're making recommendations.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Right, you didn't have that in your motion. Your motion, yeah.
I apologize.
That's okay, that's fine. So, all right, so Larry seconded, so any further discussion before I call a vote?
I just think they, the citizens will be up in arms to have a traffic light in the town.
Not a bad idea.
All right, so if there's no further discussion, I'll, I'll call for a vote, so Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Larry?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, Kate?
Nay.
I love this, I love when we have four votes. So I'm, I'm going to be a nay strictly just because of the traffic light part, because I, if it was just a four-way stop, I would have been a yay, I think that's the less, less invasive option. But the traffic light, I think, is years in the future, but that motion fails, so. It was two to two. So, any other, uh, motions anybody wants to make? Kate, do you want to make a motion?
Uh, not one that will pass, no.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion that we recommend to the DOT to go with the four-way stop option, end of motion.
Well, second for discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Larry.
Bob, I don't have any discussion, it's a second.
All right, so any discussion, Larry wants some discussion. No discussion?
I really wish the abutters were on this call.
We have a couple, so, uh, I'm gonna call for.
Matt, you shoot for the moon and take what you get.
Oh yeah, I know, I know. I know.
You're never gonna get it, and then they won't put in, you know, they won't, they won't do it.
Yeah.
And then you find out you need it, and now you gotta pay for it.
Well, they're either gonna do it or not do it, regardless of our motion. That's the interesting news.
All right, I'm gonna call for a vote then. Uh, Charlie, how do you vote on my motion?
Well, I have to vote yes, because I, I don't want the intersection to go away.
Okay, uh, Larry?
Yes.
Uh, Kate?
Nay.
Uh, Matt say yes, so. So, again, that motion carries, so basically, again, just to review, we're gonna send a letter that's essentially gonna have the minutes attached, and we're gonna say, this motion carried by the Board of Selectment, and it's a recommendation. Uh, that's all it is, so in the future, please, what it comes down to is, whatever happens, don't blame us. I think is what it comes down to, so.
Yeah, as Matt put it, they do what they want.
Exactly, so. They even said, if you're on the YouTube channel and watch the DOT hearing, at the end, they basically said, "We'd love to know what you recommend, but we're gonna basically do whatever we." All right, anything else for the public hearing before we close it? All right, uh, I think I, Diane, I don't have to get a motion to close the public hearing, right? I can do it on my own.
That's correct.
Okay, so at 7:38, I'm gonna thank everybody for attending this public hearing. And I'm gonna bring it to a close, so everybody knows, we're gonna pick up in about three minutes. We're gonna pick up our public, our normally scheduled public selectment board meeting. So if anybody doesn't want to be part of that meeting, they can drop off a Zoom and have a good night. But otherwise, if you want to stick around, we'd love to have you, so. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, I'd love to be there, but I've gotta go.
Happy birthday, Kate, everybody say happy birthday.